It is a joke. It was...
That's a joke?
Yes, yeah. I'll tell you.
She has no problem with me.
Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens at the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, WCSOH.org. Click on the district link then select Board of Education, then Board Docs, and select This Evening's Meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.01 through 12.05. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located in the back of the room on a table. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Ms. Hendricks, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Dr. Nesterbaker.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, District Highlights and Recognitions. We have none this evening. Agenda Item 4.01, Approval of the Minutes, as read for the board meetings on November 20 and December 4, 2017. And what we do is we simply approve the minutes if there are no corrections or questions, and hearing none at this time. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Facilities Committee Report. Who is going to be introducing this? Dr. Kellogg, you?
Actually, I want to introduce Mr. LaRose and his team. He's going to come forward. Kind of a three-part presentation night, so we'll start off with Mr. LaRose.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. As Dr. Kellogg said, this presentation is being delivered in three parts. So I will be providing a summary of the information that was presented to the committee in the preparation for their work. Members of the committee will present their facility master planning recommendations, and Dr. Kellogg will follow up with next steps for the board's consideration. So last December, as part of the annual Facility Master Plan update, the board supported our recommendation to develop a long-range building renovation and replacement program. The board also requested that the 10-year enrollment forecast be updated, which we completed in March. In April, the board approved entering into an active planning process with the Ohio School Facilities Commission. This includes conducting a building condition assessment for each school. The results of this assessment are due in March of 18. The board also requested a second condition assessment outside of the OSFC that is being finalized by Triad Architects. To help in the development of a long-range plan for our building, a committee was established in May and June, with the first committee meeting occurring in July. And in November, the committee's recommendations were presented to Dr. Kellogg, and these recommendations are being shared with you this evening. The committee consists of 27 members that represent high school academic boosters, parent council, the Westerville Chamber of Commerce, the City of Westerville, Genoa Township, Minerva Park, Westerville Partners for Education, the Westerville Education Foundation, the WEA, our school board, and school administration. The committee's purpose is to present a long-range planning recommendation that addresses district school building needs involving aging infrastructure, forecasted student enrollment, current and forecasted curriculum needs, and building safety and security needs. The committee met seven times starting in July. We discussed the condition of our building infrastructure as well as our forecasted enrollment. In August, we reviewed program space needs as recommended by the executive directors of elementary and secondary education. In September, we -- the committee toured selected schools to evaluate the conditions firsthand. Also, in September, the committee reviewed cost options ranging from building renovation to building replacement. In early October, the committee requested a work session to discuss the information presented to date. And later that month, the treasurer's office presented financing options ranging from no new taxes to a community-approved bond. In November, the committee held an additional work session to finalize their recommendations. And during both work sessions, the committee spent time discussing options without the presence of school administration. And on November 15th, these recommendations were presented to Dr. Kellogg. This is a slide we presented at the July meeting that shows the schools that the Ohio School Facilities Commission recommended for replacement from their condition assessment in 2001. And in an effort to narrow the focus, the committee selected to build their recommendations around schools that are currently 55 years and older. And this includes Emerson, Hanby, Longfellow, Central College, Whittier, Hawthorne, and This slide shows the building components that architects and engineers have and are evaluating as part of the condition assessment. In 2001, the identified needs totaled $112 million. We have some preliminary information coming in from Triad's assessment that totals around $125 million at this time, but that's currently being reviewed and updated. Some fun facts. This slide reflects some of the events that occurred when our schools were built. For example, South was completed in 1960, the same year Bedrock's Stone Age Family, the Flintstones premiered. Now, that's old, right? Hawthorne was completed in 1957, the year American Bandstand first aired on TV. And when Whittier was built in 1952, kids did not have computer games. They were playing with potatoes, as shown here with the debut of Mr. Potato Head. Hanby opened the same year the Lincoln Memorial was dedicated, in 1922. Central College, 1931, the same year of Little Orphan Annie's first radio transmission. Longfellow also opened in 1931, the same year the Star Spangled Banner was adopted as our national anthem. And Emerson, built in 1896, was the same year that Utah became the 45th state. We presented our student enrollment update to the committee that is forecasting by FY27, elementary enrollment will increase by 140 students from this year's enrollment, middle school by 227, and high school by 346. And based on current school capacities, we are projecting being overcapacity at the middle and high school levels. We also shared the additional number of classrooms requested for elementary programming, program growth, and that is an additional 15 classrooms to support all-day kindergarten, three additional classrooms for special ed, and 11 classrooms for limited English proficient School administration shared the recommended capacity for an elementary school to be between 450 and 600 students, and this is based on a team-teaching approach with three to four teachers or classrooms per grade level. And shown in red font are the schools that are outside of this range. Seven of the 16 elementaries are highlighted as being outside of the desired capacity range. Fausen, Alcott, both above 600. Central College, Emerson, Hanby, Longfellow, and Whittier, under 450. For middle school, school administration recommends a capacity of 600 to 700 students, equating to 200 to 250 students per grade level. And that is similar to what we have at Blendon currently. So three of our four middle schools exceed this range, Genoa, Heritage, and Walnut Springs. Scott Reeves shared that our middle schools are operating at the capacity of a typical high school in most districts. For an elementary school classroom, the OSFC recommends 900 square feet for a typical classroom. Shown in red font under the "square feet" header are the elementary schools where classroom sizes are under 700 square feet. All of the classrooms at Central College, Hanby, and Longfellow are all under 700 square In August, our curriculum department presented to the committee the components of a 21st century classroom, consisting of multiple-use learning zones, mobile and comfortable furniture, a robust technology infrastructure that is readily available, spaces that are accessible for all students, inspirational in design with quality acoustics and lighting, with lots of display and work surface space. We discussed the effect of the physical environment on student achievement. One study conducted in England by architects and university officials concluded that the classroom environment can affect academic progress by as much as 25% over one year. And this study was reviewed and accepted by an international peer group. This slide was shown to the committee to illustrate the potential to add additional instructional space in the southern part of the district, where we have the highest density of students and the fewest schools. We are showing approximately 15 acres east of Farview Drive, across from Hawthorne, and another 14.7 acres on the former Minerva Park Golf Course, shown at the bottom left. This chart summarizes elementary concerns in reference to student capacity, classroom size, the size of the dining areas, land availability, the condition of the infrastructure, and 21st century design. What it does is reinforce the focus on Central College, Emerson, Hanby, Hawthorne, Longfellow, and Whittier. And the same thing for middle and high school, showing a focus on student capacity concerns for middle school and building infrastructure concerns at South High School. Concerns with 21st century design were discussed at all schools across the district, less Point View that we renovated and expanded in 2016. And this slide summarizes the additional information that the committee requested and was provided during our journey to support them in making their recommendations. The cost to renovate schools over 55 years in age, the feasibility to expand or repurpose schools with a student capacity under 300, including the feasibility to add space for the Elementary Magnet Program and all-day kindergarten, the feasibility to expand student capacity in the southern part of our district, the feasibility to add space for middle school programming, and the feasibility to enclose classrooms in Anheuser's, similar to what we achieved at Point View. So I would now like to introduce two of our planning committee members, Liz Washburn, president of the Westerville Parent Council, and Jack Brown, representing the Westerville Partners for Education, who will be presenting the committee's recommendations.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, President Velardo and members of the board. My name is Liz Washburn. I am president of Westerville Parent Council, and along with me is Jack Brown of Westerville Partners for Education. And we are just two of the 27 members that make up the Facilities Committee. I want to thank you, Dr. Kellogg, just for the opportunity to be a part of this committee. It's been a privilege to work alongside of community members, local business owners, representatives from local municipalities, fellow parents, and Westerville City Schools The committee understands that after the receipt of our recommendation, that there will be community outreach and feedback before the school board has the opportunity to make a final decisions. And then that you, as the board, also would -- may decide something different than our Our recommendation, though, is made being mindful of producing a fiscally responsible plan, which work on multiple school buildings can be done without additional tax money, if that is what is decided. There are a number of recommendations that would require significant community discussion and understanding, and risk management is a consideration in all facility decisions when talking about the rehabilitation, acquisition, or dispensation of any properties. The following recommendations account for maintaining the high-quality educational opportunities as well as student safety and building maintenance as priorities. This recommendation provides for an expansion of a capacity of an additional 1,330 students and impacts a minimum of seven school buildings. The physical renovation of Point View Elementary sets a good example of working within our resources to produce an exciting educational experience, and that which can be used for future Westerville City School facility renovations. Our recommendation is divided into three priority levels: critical, important, and when funds allow. All recommendations, though, we view as valuable and important, but felt it necessary to divide for planning. Of critical importance, priority one, we see that South High School, and this is in no order within these as well, but South High School, we looked at information received from district administrators, ranging from different renovations, starting at $13 million and several in between, all the way up to a rebuild of $51 million. The committee recommends a full renovation in tune with a $34 million proposal. This would allow for 21st century design, needed building updates, and necessary expansion. A major renovation would be possible, and it would still yet allow for Westerville City School facility priorities to move forward in other buildings as well. It addresses the needs for curriculum development and workforce development as well within the high school level. Also, as a priority one for us, we saw that adding a new middle school. The Farview property is the most feasible property for a new middle school complex. The new middle school is essential to fix the overcrowding population across the district at the middle school level, and allows for students at the south end of the district to be served. Also of critical importance, the committee felt it valuable that we would continue allowing for safety issues to be addressed. Parents and committee members have expressed concerns as far as, example, would be parking lot lights, things like that. You know, we want to add and increase buildings, but we also want to continue our plans with those safety issues and concerns, just as you have plans now and in the works, to address those needs. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jack for priority two.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you, President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. Tier two, which the committee overwhelmingly felt was important to fund with the available funds that we envisioned, first, and again in no particular order within tier two, renovate and expand aging elementary schools. That would include renovate and expand Longfellow, Whittier, and renovate Hawthorne for a capacity increase between the three schools of 450. The committee's rationale for this, in light of the age, condition of the buildings, the amount of space available on these properties, and the current and projected enrollment needs, we feel with renovations, these buildings will well-serve Westerville City School students well into the future. The second tier-two recommendation is add a new Minerva Park Elementary School. Our rationale was the new Minerva Park Elementary School will allow students in the south side of the district to have a neighborhood school for existing students who are now being bused elsewhere, and for new facilities, new families moving into the area. The third bullet point, again in no particular order, sell Hanby and Emerson and redistribute the student populations to other Westerville City School buildings. We defer to the district on proper housing of the Magnet and A&amp;T programs after Hanby and Emerson are sold. Our rationale for this recommendation, the committee recognizes the historical importance of these buildings, and we envision a reuse that maintains the historical shell and new uses that contribute to the character of Uptown Westerville. Existing space in these historical buildings do not allow for programs, both new and expanded, that the staff and faculty envision for the current and future student populations. These programs could be accommodated better within the other renovated and expanded elementary schools. The sale of these buildings also could potentially offset $7 million in other building improvements. If these buildings are sold, it would provide additional resources to renovate the above-mentioned buildings to meet the future curriculum and population needs of the district. The next point is keep Central College land for a potential newly constructed elementary school building at a later time. Our rationale here is these five acres are located in the right area for population growth and access. The aging building is currently leased to Head Start, but the land remains valuable to the district for future needs. Due to the condition of the existing building, the committee does not recommend renovation. And finally, on tier two, explore how to accommodate all-day kindergarten. Our rationale here is to eliminate a wait list for those families choosing all-day kindergarten. Capacity at elementary schools should accommodate, should be increased to accommodate this increase. All-day kindergarten is both an academic booster and a workforce amenity, in the opinion of the Facilities Planning Committee. Okay, and finally, tier three. These would all be good for the district when funding permits. First, renovate and expand Anheuser's Elementary. When the budget allows, the Anheuser's Elementary School facility needs to be brought up-to-date in closing all classrooms and adding capacity to meet the district programming needs. And then finally, explore how to accommodate new magnet opportunities and other in-demand curriculum items, such as the Westerville North High School shop, newly constructed facility. And that concludes the three tiers, and at this point, we'll be turning over to Dr. Kellogg.
Before I go to the podium, I wanted to see if the board had any questions for Mr. LaRose or for the committee members first. I think it might be -- unless you want me to just go ahead, I'll leave it up to you. I thought it might...
What do you think? Do you have some questions now?
I'd like to hold off until after to ask questions.
Questions now?
I can wait. Richard?
So before I bring forward my review of the committee report and some opportunities for the board, I wanted to kind of rewind the tape a second. So if you go back in this history that Jeff presented to 2001, which was the original -- was the starting point of an original OFCC study, Ohio Facilities Commission, you see the recommendations that were made back in 2001, and where we are today, where many of those recommendations that were there in 2001 are now coming forward again in some form or fashion outside of OFCC internally. I think that's important to note, because what it means is since 2001, we've continued to maintain those buildings and run programming in the district with the resources we have to the best of our ability in moving things forward. And I think that's -- there's a lot of people who go into making that happen, from custodians to maintenance folks, to transportation, to principals, to teachers, all across the district, that have allowed us to continue to stretch the resources we have to see how far we can go. And the question as we move forward is, are we at the time now where we can't afford to kick the can down the road any further? There are parts of this recommendation that I think are clear. The other parts, I think, get a little bit murkier and going to be a little bit more difficult for us in the community as we move along. But I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to take a moment at the end while the slide with all the committee members. But I wanted to thank the committee members, because there was a lot of time and energy, and I sat in on most of the meetings and watched their work. The energy and enthusiasm and detail that they went at it, and we didn't pay them anything but lunch, was really remarkable. Their insights, their thoughts, the questions they asked, the data they wanted to see, the information they wanted to move along. And that was a rather rapid pace to bite into the facilities question for a school district that they did. And so hats off to them for the outstanding work. I think the recommendations they put forward to the board are very clear and dead-on with the information that we have. So I've taken time since then to review the report, and I want to bring forward some thoughts from my seat to the board and then talk about what next steps would be. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the report itself, what I see some limitations and some opportunities, where I think we need to do next, some financial considerations. And then I want to keep an eye on the prize of, this is one part of the fleet of buildings that we have. Behind it, there's another fleet, and we need to take a look at that and be mindful to the long term of this thing. So limitations, and that don't mean limitations that the committee didn't give thought to these things. I think many of the committee members would point to these as being either undecided or limitations about where we're at, they're going to need more opportunity for more discussion. And the first one, I think Liz set it right up front, is this is a starting point for a community conversation. This isn't the end point of a community conversation. This is a starting point for a community conversation, so we're going to have to look some more at that. The cost estimates that Jeff has provided that were in the slides, these are exactly that, they're estimates. These are not actual numbers yet, and so anybody walking in the room who wants to quote the numbers, keep in mind, this is -- we're not at a point where we know what the numbers are. We have good estimates, but we don't have final numbers yet. The other thing is, and although it's mentioned in the report, the financing of the final solution is still something that has to be hashed out. There is very clearly an opportunity for what some people would describe as a no-new-tax option. We have the ability to leverage our permanent improvement levy, which brings in roughly $9 million a year. And because you have that permanent revenue stream, there's a financial opportunity to use that permanent revenue stream to essentially take a loan on the district's behalf over a time period. We use the revenue for that to pay down the loan in order to fund a construction project, which would mean we're staying in our permanent improvement, our capital improvement budget. So there is that opportunity, depending on what this whole process brings forward in terms of how we want to fund this thing. Doesn't eliminate the opportunity or the need to go to the voters or some partnership between both those solutions, but that solution does exist. The other piece I just want to remind us is we have committed to partnering with OFCC. That does not mean we have to do an OFCC project. So for the community's understanding, we've partnered with OFCC, which means in the first leg of that journey, they can do a facilities analysis, much like Triad did for us, with some cost analysis like you saw before. They also do their own enrollment update, and they use that data to prevent us a facilities master plan. So we go faster than most state agencies, in this case, we have. We're a bit further along in the process than they are, but we expect that sometime around March, they'll have their final report for us. I would not anticipate that the kinds of projects we're looking at, the bulk of them probably do not lend themselves well to an OFCC co-funded project. I do think there's components in there that may have an opportunity for a co-funded project. It's just something that has to be looked out down the line. For those who don't know OFCC, it's a state agency, receives state funding. Depending on the economics of your school district, the percentage of the project can be financed through that OFCC money. So it would be an opportunity for us to decrease the costs to our taxpayers through the OFCC program. The other thing to consider in this whole big picture is, though all this is furniture and equipment and buildings, and it's all generally capital improvements, there are operational costs... operational costs within this. If you open a school, even if you're consolidating schools, when you're moving staff, et cetera, somewhere down the line is going to be operational costs. It's not a zero-sum game, both in terms of maintaining facilities during a renovation. I don't know the magnitude of a renovation at South, and I don't know what that means in terms of how we operate school while the renovations are going on, what that means for us in terms of classroom space. But there will be operational dollars that have to be associated with this along the way. If you open a building, there's administrative costs, there's custodial costs, et cetera. The other piece, and I think the committee did a nice job of this one, in their recommendations for Hanby and Emerson, they're very clear that they're not, it's not about eliminating programming, it's about facilities. But what they've asked or moved to administration to consider is, in the recommendations they've made, there's space and room for that programming, but they've given it to us to decide or have a process for deciding how we might want to house those programming. So that's a solution that's not clear yet, but one that needs to be worked on. Opportunities from this, the greatest opportunity in this entire recommendation is the fact that it does clearly take care of infrastructure needs that are some critical buildings for us. There's a point of no return when you're kicking the can down the road, we have to be careful there. It clearly provides opportunities at the middle school level. We are in the process now with the middle school design team, and that's going to be a lengthy process where they're looking at programming at middle school and what we want middle school to look like. We want to take our middle schools to a whole nother level. The recommendations that they make regarding a middle school at the south end of the district, which would redistribute some population of students, would provide space at all the middle schools for additional programming that we might want to put in place down the line for our middle school students. And it adds capacity across the district as the recommendations show. A good portion of that is at the south end of the district. I'm going to give you a couple of quick numbers I was doing today. So I won't do it open-mic style, but there are roughly 6,600 students south of 270 in our school district. So if you use that as the south end and forget, you know, there's the east-west border, but the south end down, there's roughly 6,600 of our 15,000 students housed down there. There's exactly two schools south of 270, Huber Ridge and Hawthorne, for a total, and that's just elementary, seats of about 1,100. So we are, through transportation, transporting a lot of students northward in the district to other schools, and we know what that looks like, we know what neighborhood schools look like, we've all seen the map. This does add a lot of capacity down at that end for our families to make more neighborhood schools. It's a great opportunity. It does continue to emphasize elementary Magnet program. In fact, it maintains it and provides opportunity for enhancing. There's even a recommendation there for possible increase, depending on what we do with facilities. It does maintain our self-contained elementary program, and it considers opportunities to move forward with all-day kindergarten. And I think it may not get as much attention as I think it should, but this whole concept of 21st century design and what we could be doing in classroom spaces, I think is a huge win for our students, for our staff. So we're talking, you know, Jeff's pictures of the year and what was popular is pretty poignant. And if people have heard me say this before, 1973, '74, I believe, was the year the federal government adopted the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, which recognized the status of special education students, gave them opportunities and access to public schools. Anything built before that time period was built before there was special education. So that's what, 30-something years, 40-something years? We have a lot of buildings where we're making spaces, carving out spaces in buildings for students whose learning needs are some of the most difficult to overcome, and putting them in spaces that may be the least inspiring at all. So the growth in those components of public education and just the impact of the 21st century, remind you, it's 2017, almost 2018, we're still talking about moving to 21st century, I think can't be understated. And as the committee pointed out, if you look at some of the work we have done, Point Review Place to look at, the shop at North, as well as the Center for Inspiration at Walnut Springs demonstrates the kind of work we can do here in partnership with our agency. So I think there's some great opportunities there. So what's next? As the committee suggested, we have started sketching out, the administrative team has started sketching out a community involvement schedule, the first phase being multiple opportunities for people to engage with us. We are working with an online feedback tool that we would roll out. We have already scheduled myself and members of our team to go out to the various schools to have discussions with all the staffs, so they have an idea of what's in the recommendations and know what's coming. We'll open ourselves up to any school groups that would want us to come in and talk about it and then have a conversation. So any of our PTOs out there, any of our booster groups, we're receptive to doing that. We'd like to set up some community meetings, be in people's homes in various communities, sit down, have coffee, talk about the plan, hear what people's thoughts are. We'll just continue all the conversations we can, telephone polls. So we have a multi-pronged approach to a first phase of community involvement. We've sketched that out to probably, depending on where the board asks us to be, but we would suggest that we'd like to get started in mid-January and that first phase done before we hit March. As I show up here, the second phase of that, which would really be dependent upon the first phase, this is a fast pace. This is a fast pace for community engagement, which is why it's multiple-pronged. After the first phase ending in March, we'll turn around that data, work with the board, design a second phase, see what we need to do, and try and wrap that all up by May of 2018. As I said, I think that's a tremendously aggressive community engagement timeline. I think it's hopeful, I think it's optimistic, which is the way I like to be. It's possible that something in that process gives us information we've missed so far that may slow it down or may speed parts of it up. Not sure yet, but we need to do that. We'd also like to sit down with the building staff at the four schools that are slated for renovations, and we just, we have an understanding of the infrastructure problems, right? Staff doesn't look at HVAC systems, they're not looking at boiler rooms, they're not looking at electrical panels, they're not up on the roofs. They'll tell you when there's a leak, when the air conditioning's not working well, but they're not looking at the systems. So we have that information and that data and those costs. What we like to hear from those staff is just to talk about, in your current building, what are the limitations to teaching and learning? What might be some enhancements, some opportunities to improve this building if this is the path we lead down? It's not a design phase, it's more of a gathering information about what the limitations of that current building are and how we might address that. The big question, I think this is the one that is going to be, going to take the most time to discuss. I thought the committee did an excellent job of framing this recommendation, particularly the piece about Hanby and Emerson, where they're recommending, and I think they said it quite well, in my words, the inefficiencies that exist there really can't be resolved. The programming is great, the staff are great, the families are great, but the facility doesn't support the kind of programming we want to have go on there, and we think we can do better there. But that, particularly those two buildings, in light of the recommendations, I would suggest need a lot more further community engagement based on what the committee's given us. They've given us a good foundation to start the conversation, but I think it's going to take a lot more conversation. I think their recommendations about Central College and Longfellow are dead-on in terms of their efficiencies. There is greater land space there, which makes replacements or renovations there a stronger possibility, and maintaining, particularly with Longfellow, just its presence in that neighborhood and the look that it has, I think is kind of important. Other considerations, as the committee pointed out, safety upgrades, we want to make sure that our buildings are safe, we want to continue talking about all-day kindergarten, and we have coming forward the recommendations from the Learning and Teaching Roadmap, our revised version. We're working on the draft of it now, but it has some recommendations about enhanced opportunities for students to have devices. And that report as well, coming from staff, takes a close look at furniture and spaces and aligns very well with Mr. LaRose's and the committee's recommendations about 21st century learning. So I think it's December 11th, we're really early, we have a great opportunity to see how that roadmap will dovetails in with this project and where the partnership might be. Then the big one is probably the financial commitments. I would recommend the following, regardless of how the board and the community decide to go down on the path of financing this thing, when I look at our current general funds and capital improvement funds, I would recommend that any financing of the facilities comes solely from what I would describe as capital improvement funds, using that permanent improvement dollars, or if necessary, going on the ballot for a bond issue in order to support this. As I look at our five-year forecast and where we're at and where we've been and where we're trying to go, I think we're in a position where we can address our facilities' needs without disturbing the projections of our general fund right now. And that goes to the, I'm really saying the same thing twice here, the project shouldn't, and echoing what the committee said, we don't want to tie up so much money in the recommendations that we cannot continue to address our current five-year capital improvement plan. We can't sacrifice current needs for what we're trying to do. So there's got to be a balance in there of how we're doing our funding. And we've seen some preliminary information that shows us we can do that, we just have to be thoughtful about it. And I also would prefer that we take a look at this, and again, it's kind of redundant to the first part, don't want to do anything to substantially alter the five-year forecast. Clearly, some of the shakeups in here, new buildings, closing some buildings will shape operational costs down the line, but I think those can be managed in a way where we don't substantially change our five-year forecast and change commitments we've made to the community and future needs for general fund dollars to operate our buildings. In short, I don't want to be one of those school districts that builds a building, opens it, and then doesn't have the funds to open it and run it. I've seen that happen. So I think we need to give some strong consideration to financial commitments, which really are contingent upon what the final plan is. You have a framework for a start of a plan that's still got some wiggle room, we just want to be careful. And lastly, I want to remind us all that there's a whole phase of buildings behind us. We really, I kind of cut our building fleet into three groups. It's this tier that's in there today, the seven buildings. Here would be the next tier. So none of these made, that 55-year-old cut was hard for me, because I'll be 56 in June, so, which I just heard is I'm obsolete, which my children tell me sometimes. So you can see that...
Would you like to put some renovation in there?
I, two weeks ago, I had that done.
You did have some renovation, didn't you?
Bionic man. So there's that next fleet of buildings that are getting close to that 55 age. So going back to my start about, you know, in 2001, we started one place, we've managed to keep it together, but there's kind of a set of waves coming. The more we delay, those seven buildings are on the list or that first phase of projects, the sooner these then enter into that same place. And behind that are some buildings that are younger, that have a little more life in them. So that's the other pieces, this next phase. So there are, I think, five big questions for the board to consider in the coming weeks. One is the question of, based on what you've heard tonight, do you want administration to move forward with developing a community involvement process? I've laid out conceptually an idea for you that would begin in January. This is our last board meeting until the new meeting in January, so we're looking for feedback, and it can come tonight, or you can discuss and let us know about whether you want us to start that community involvement process. Two, I think it would be, or we think it would be advisable, if we are going to go down that path, to start talking to the building staffs to look at what the limitations of those buildings are educationally today. Three, based on the recommendations from that committee and knowing community sentiment around Hanby and Emerson, would you like us to begin any kind of targeted community engagement specifically around those two buildings and what the community sentiment is around the recommendations and how to move forward on that? Fifth one would be clarifying those financial commitments that we talked about, general fund, permanent improvement, bond issues. And the last one would be, assuming we do number one, which I highly suspect we will be, we'll bring back that first phase of community involvement to you when it's done to design the second to see where we're at. So those are questions for the board we have this evening for you to chew on, give us feedback on either tonight or in the future. And finally, here is the list of very talented and committed people who came forward and just provided tremendous leadership in this entire process, and so I want to thank each of them for that time and their energy. They did some pretty fun stuff. They asked for work sessions, they asked for more information, they asked us to take our lunch and leave the room so they could talk behind closed doors without us, they met outside time, they did great, great work. And so on behalf of our administrative team, and I know the board, I'd like to thank each of them this evening for that work and their efforts on this project. I think they did an outstanding job, so I thank you to all of them. That concludes the report. Happy to entertain any questions you have for me or any of the presenters. I'll turn it over to you all.
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Do you want to stay up there? You want to come back here? However you want to do this, fine.
I'll come over there.
You want to come back? Before we go into some brief discussion here, I would like, on behalf of the board, to absolutely thank Mr. LaRose for all the work that he's done for a long time, but particularly in this section today. Would love to thank Liz Washburn and Jack Brown, who are still here, right? There you are. Thank you for the tremendous amount of work that you all have done and being willing to be here tonight. Mrs. Davidson and I attended, I think, each one of the meetings as kind of the board representatives, and really, just so grateful for all those folks that, Richard joined at one of the meetings as well, I don't know if any others, I don't want to leave anybody out, but the folks that were on that slide, they not only, outside of their normal work life, were participating in this process, they actually toured some of the buildings too. And just beyond grateful for all that you've done. And I would say, and then I'm just going to ask for board comments, and I'll chime in as well, we are just really honored by the community that is allowing us to have this kind of discussion and has supported this district, certainly financially, but in many other ways. The tremendous amount of volunteer work that goes on in this district is, I would suggest, incalculable. So thank you to the community for allowing us to do this kind of deep dive and hard discussion, and some of the community will be involved in some of that deep dive and hard discussion. No decisions have been made, and we are excited to begin the process of looking at this information. I don't know if we want to go in order down this way. Jerry, do you want to dive in first, however you all want to do this?
Okay. I have a question, and I think it's going to be for Jeff. How much money would it take to begin, the very beginning stages of the design process for the priority one items that they talked about, the new middle, a new middle school and renovation at South High School?
So I've had some discussions with Triad Architects in reference to that, and going back to the model for the Ohio School Facilities Commission in designing projects of this magnitude, they budget 7.5% for design, clear up to the construction documents, plus there's another 6-plus percent for construction management. A total, I think, they have 16-plus percent for all non-construction costs. Now, for the component you're talking about, our goal is to come in under that OSFC model of 7.5% for design. So when we're looking at those critical one issues, which would be South and the new middle school, and if we're just doing the schematic design, so and again, working with Triad, they have about 20% of the total design fees for schematic design. When I've done that preliminary calculation, it's coming in around $750,000.
And how long does the process take to do projects like this, from the design to the bidding and the construction? I know it might be different for a new school versus a renovation. Do you have any ideas? And I know you can't promise anything, but...
Well, the challenge is going to be, number one, identifying what the scope of work is, and one challenge being South with an occupied building. So a new middle school is a little more clean-cut, because we're not working around an existing facility that is occupied. So South is a bit of a challenge. We had preliminarily laid out a plan based on a, this was a no-new-tax option that was presented to us when the Treasurer's Office presented, and we had a consultant come in, and it was based on financing through the capital plan. Typically, those dollars have to be expended over a three-year timeframe. Now, what they shared is if the scope of work is... Now, what they shared is if the scope of work is one that is supported by your architect, you can go up to five years. So with the, with the scope of work that was identified, the three tiers, we had worked to, you know, can we do this, this volume of work in a five-year period? And the answer was yes. So specifically for, for South High School, and again, this was based on working around the existing occupants, the students, we had that over a four-year timeframe. Now, that's not to say we could look at that more aggressively if, if we're tasked to do so. There's, there's, there could be opportunities where if we're, if we build a new addition, which is part of the $34 million option, and we build that is conducted during the school year, and we would have to be mindful that we're doing that work outside of when we're having classes with, with noise and such, we could look at a build and then relocate a portion of the students. So we had opportunities to renovate during the school year. And when I say during the school year, most of that work is going to be evenings and weekends. So I shared a four-year option that we could look at consolidating that.
Okay. I mean, how, what would be a really good case scenario timeframe, then? Is it three years, two?
Well, with the, with the middle school as an example, where we don't have those same obstacles. So we have budgeted in there a year for design. We have two months in for, for bidding an award, and we have 17 months in there for construction. So it's roughly a two-and-a-half-year project for the new middle school. Again, that's preliminary estimating. If, if there's a desire of the school board, we can look at that harder, but that gives you a general idea.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
Those are my questions, and then I'll come back.
Might as well just stay there, Jeff. I have a few questions for you. Let's see, where to start? When costs were identified as regards renovation, how do you define those costs to renovate?
So the, one of the slides I had shared, you had looked at the building components, the existing infrastructure components. So the renovation costs are based on condition assessment only. So, for example, South High School identified between 13 and 14 million. That was just looking at what the engineers and architects had identified as things that should be done now or forecasted over a 10-year period, and this is the same model that's used by the OSFC. When you look at that $34 million option, that was looking at also incorporating 21st Century Design into the mix, which isn't part of the condition assessment. Again, the condition assessment is just the, the physical infrastructure as you see it today. 21st Century Design is creating that, those project-based learning environments. So at South High School, for example, where you have those long hallways with the classrooms flanked on each side, we were looking at ways we could open up these wings. When we were opening up wings, it required us looking at putting additional space onto the building. So the, and that 34 million, we had identified seven different areas for possible expansion using the existing footprint and not encroaching to where we're having to modify parking areas or having to modify fields, ball fields. So that 34 million included all seven additions that we identified. So it could, it could very well be that all seven are not needed, and that, that cost could come down. But for the committee's work, we had shared all the possibilities to expand the building and incorporate 21st Century Design.
So you're looking at basically $14 million for safe, warm, and dry, and then $20 million beyond that?
That is correct.
Another question on definition. When you're talking about Emerson and Hanby, and you say that inefficiencies cannot be resolved, what are those inefficiencies?
Inefficiencies that were discussed and identified as part of the firsthand building tours, and this was also hearing feedback from staff, and as an example, Hanby with those sizes of classrooms, we heard from administration there that it's, it's very challenging to do the type of, of learning that they desire with the limitations of the size of the classrooms being under 700 square feet. Again, OSFC model recommends 900. Now, you don't have that issue at Emerson. The size of those classrooms are at or beyond what OSFC recommends. The challenge is there, it's, it is a small building that has limited space in the café. It does not have a gymnasium. When we were looking at how we could add to those, add to Emerson to incorporate that, there's just no room. You, you have no green space, you're looking at, all the paved areas is the playground, you have limited parking there, you have limited parking at Hanby. So both of those sites relatively one acre, and the challenges were, how can we grow those buildings to accommodate 21st Century Design when you're limited to, to one acre? Central College was a discussion point as well, but with the, with the additional acre we picked up more recently, you've got a total of five. And with some preliminary work done with Triad Architects, we had shown where we could expand the size of that building via replacement and incorporate 21st Century Design.
Another question, kind of definitional also-
Sure.
But not quite as definitional. When you talk about overcapacity at the different grade levels, it would be helpful to get a sense of where those overcapacity numbers are as regards the particular buildings we're talking about. And in other words, where are the overcapacities projected to be in the attendance areas as they're currently designed?
We have that information. We can certainly come back and share that. When we were discussing that at today's presentation, it was, it was a mix for capacity at middle school as a total. So we have forecasted, there's a given year, actually, it's FY '20, this is FY '21, based on current capacity as identified in FY '17. And again, you've heard me say this before, what we do is we reach out to principals to tell us how they're using each space, and then we, in turn, take that information and recalculate the given capacity. So we had the capacities for last year, and we were looking at that, measuring that against the forecasted, the updated forecasted enrollment. And for middle school, the capacity, the enrollment was exceeding the capacity in FY ' '21 at middle school, and at high school, it was FY '25. We didn't have that issue at elementary, with the exception if we're going to grow programming. So if we're going to add the spaces that, that were identified by the curriculum department for all day kindergarten and limited English proficient, that was warranting the, the new elementary school.
So as you look at the high schools-
Yes.
And you look at the attendance areas for, the attendance patterns for each of the high schools, and our current districting of who attends which schools and so forth, what, of the number of students that we anticipate moving into the high schools with the continuing population growth that we have, what are you looking at as regards overcapacity numbers specifically for South and specifically for North? I've got a pretty good sense of where Central is right now, but what are we looking at, particularly at South and North?
Yeah, great question. And if you recall, when we did the enrollment forecasting, we didn't pay for that level of detail. So that was a much more expensive option for us to look at. What we paid for was looking at it as a breakdown of elementary, middle, and high school.
So that's something down the road we would have to look at.
We could look at trend data, we do have trend data, but as terms, but in terms of forecasting, we could certainly present that option for the board's consideration in terms of procuring our consultant to perform that, but we haven't done that to date.
If I might, to that point, I'm working with a firm now, Jeff knows about this, with a forecasting tool I use that will use cohort survival methodology. And so what we're doing is building into a GPS system, neighborhood maps. So if you think of neighborhoods attached to schools, we'll be able to, using neighborhood maps and their cohort survival method, we'll actually be able to break this down to neighborhoods. And so as we look at boundary areas, we'll be able to say, okay, the enrollment projection's based on this model. Now, of course, the smaller the size, the smaller the end size, it's typical statistics, you know, there's more variability, but we'll have the capacity to do enrollment projections by neighborhood, and when we look at boundaries, we can see some of that, so for South, et cetera.
That's great, that's great. One more quick one, and then two quick comments, and I'm done.
Okay.
Let me see, which ones I want to pick. Am I understanding correctly, as I look at the recommendations for the elementary schools, what I am seeing over time is that we are going to be, if we were to follow the recommendations as presented, and we've got lots of community input yet to come, but, you know, just working from what I have right now, basically, we would be getting rid of almost all of our small elementaries. We would be expanding sizes so that basically Ann Hurst and Longfellow would be the smallest. So most of our buildings would be larger elementaries, 600 students and up.
Well, keep in mind, the recommendation for Longfellow was to expand Longfellow.
I know.
Okay.
Like 450.
Yep.
Yeah, that's why I said Longfellow. So the smallest buildings basically would be the Longfellow, and Ann Hurst would be our smallest buildings, until we build onto Ann Hurst, which would take that up to 600. So we'd basically be removing, all of our buildings would tend to be in that 600-student size at the elementaries, with the exception of a Longfellow. Am I understanding that correctly?
I'd have to go back and check. Definitely within the 400, 50, and 600 recommended range, based on the feedback we, we had from elementary education. But I'd have to check and see if there's-
I did some, I did some preliminary in that, so if you, the other part of the recommendation was the new middle school, the new elementary at Minerva Park, which shifts enrollment. So I don't think it's, I don't think you get lots of buildings at 600. I think the bulk of our buildings fall around 500.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful.
Because of redistribution of population from portions.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. The Minerva Park elementary was, the price, the price we had shared was based on a 500 student capacity.
Right, okay, that's good. Then just two general things. Number one, the community engagement piece, that, in my estimation, is extraordinarily important. When we're talking about what needs to be done, we're talking major sums of money and significant changes in a lot of, of our buildings. That means that because the schools belong to everybody within the community, we really need to get thoughts and feelings from community members broadly, widely across, whether they work within the district, whether they attend the schools, whether they do not. So I really want us to lead with that as quickly as we possibly can. We all have opinions about the recommendations, thoughts, feelings, knowledge about the recommendations, but it's extremely important that we take the recommendations as they are to the community and move those into discussion so that there can be no doubt that we haven't made up our minds about anything. The recommendations are, are really good. There are some that, you know, I raise my hand and say, well, what if and what about? But we haven't made up our mind, and I want, I'm hearing some people saying, well, you know, you're going to do this, and you're going to do that. No, we haven't said that. So it's important that we go out, we need to do it. One thing that I want to be sure that we draw attention to, and Dr. Kellogg, you put it in your slide on next steps, there needs to be substantial thought regarding Emerson and Hanby. Substantial. We cannot incorporate it in the other recommendations as important as they all are as well because of Emerson and Hanby's historic place within the district. So thank you for calling that out, I appreciate it. The last thing is, the reason I didn't attend committee meetings is because three of us can't be together at a, in a setting where the things that are being discussed are likely to lead to decisions by the board. So it wasn't that only interested board members went, it's that you could only have a couple of us there at a time. So I wanted to make clear that you just didn't think that, I just didn't go because I didn't care, I care a whole lot. So, next. Thank you, Jeff.
Welcome.
Thank you, Nancy. And if I gave any indication that people weren't there because they didn't care, I just would like to make that for the record, that, that was not my intent. Richard?
Probably nothing but, but comments, really. I mean, first of all, my thanks to, you know, the citizens that were participants in the committee, that it's tremendous amount of information to go through, had an opportunity to visit a meeting, and the enthusiasm, as well as sometimes the shock of the complexity, was, was truly appreciated. You know, it's, it's interesting, I've been passionate about this subject since joining the school board, became much more passionate about it when I was able to participate in the activities in Minerva Park. We saw opportunities there, we knew that we needed to get, get the ball rolling. Obviously, we've started that. Community involvement is going to be critical. You know, I think some of the things that I'm concerned about, first, I am thankful for the enrollment trends update. I have been saying for a couple of years, I had very big concerns about us basing trend data on, on forecast lines that were strictly around the number of students that have historically been in the district. I think it's important to, and I was just pulling up some numbers, we tend to think of Olentangie School District as, you know, this monster, right? They're bringing, you know, multiple new high schools online. I think it's interesting to note, I actually just pulled it up, the Olentangie School District population within the school district boundaries is 164,000 people. The Westerville City School District population within the school boundaries is 160,000 people. The number of homes transacted in sales and put in contract for every month for the last couple of years has been about the same between us and Olentangie. Yet Olentangie's bringing a fifth high school online, right? And, and it's, it's a simple reality from a number standpoint that there are more students under households or under rooftops in, in Olentangie, because we know the percentage of students that occupy houses today in Westerville. But we're transacting real estate at the same rate, which means people are moving into our community. And if, if you're anywhere in the Uptown area, you'll know that a house went for sale on, on State Street and was in contract in 42 minutes. So, and we're seeing student-age children being brought into homes where baby boomers are now leaving in this market. So we have to think about the realities when we think about the second wave of schools that come behind. I think the aging is interesting. I appreciated the, the historical references. I think it's interesting, Westerville South was built when my dad was in junior high school, right? Now, if we think about, if we think about the pace of change around capital improvements within a school district, especially of this size, a top 10 in the state, you know, trying to move the, the needle quickly, quickly as relative, because Westerville North came online when I was in third grade, right? And the challenge that we see, and I'm very excited about getting the community involved, but the challenge that we will see is, is that our passion, interest, and emotion is tied directly to schools when our children are in them, and when we are parents of children or grandparents of children that are in those schools. I literally live within walking distance of the school that I went to in, in a cottage up, up where I grew up. I have been back to that school twice in the last 30 years. And the last time I went, two years to go to deliver commencement address to a class 30 years after I left, I got lost. And it's a building that holds K through 12, and it looks entirely different, right? I was not involved in any of that. I'm excited about it, but I wasn't involved in any of the changes that happened in that building after I left. So we have to make sure that our processes are aligned for the long term, because changing these schools is a generational thing, right? If we get to work on, on Westerville South and it takes us four years, that means that an entire cohort of high school students goes through a school that's being renovated and not done, right? They, they don't get the experience of a fully completed building, right? Only the kids that come after them do. Only the kids that come after them do. You know, so this is for the long haul. Now, if we think about, just a little bit further about that second tract, and I want us to not take our eye off the ball as it relates to all the great work that the committee's done, all the good work we're going to do in terms of evaluating the, the presentations and the decisions that we make as a board, they're going to resound and resonate, you know, for years and decades after we're no longer on this board, maybe not even around, right, on this earth. The second wave is, is if we finish these projects in five years and we get to the second wave before the 12-year mark, when I said that we do these things in generations, if you think of a generation as 25 years, that's super fast, right? If we get to that next wave within a 12-year time period, that is super fast. I am glad that we, as a district, were even able to talk about it, because many districts cannot have this discussion. But the challenge is, is that it will seem terribly slow to many people in our community, to our students that are sitting here this evening, because some of these projects will finish after you graduate, right? But in terms of moving this ship, it will be light speed if we get these projects done in the next, you know, five to 15 years.
Ready? All right. So Liz and Jack, I'm going to ask you to come back up, because I'm going to ask you guys some questions. And I wanted to thank Richard, I missed a meeting and he stepped in for me, so, thank So I'm going to just follow by your slide of what you guys had, had up there, but I really, what I want you to do is kind of paint a picture of how the committee came to putting these three items at the critical or the number-one priority. So I know you both went on tours, so talk about, let's talk a little bit about South and the facility and what you saw, and so what made you put it up there?
Yes, so, especially with my position with Westerville Parent Council, and there were several parents also on this committee besides myself. But on the tour, I mean, you, you definitely can see the aging infrastructure, and not that we haven't addressed something critical that's leaking or happening now, but it's just like in homeownership, you, you, yes, you address the leaking faucet, but all the faucets are corroding. And so you really get that picture when you walk through South. I have heard from other parents as part of my council, when they're in there working the booster groups, you know, the bathrooms are embarrassing for other, you know, sports teams to come in and other communities to come in, and, you know, yeah, it, it isn't a 21st century learning space. You know, you walk into Point View, I've gone into Westerville North and their shop, and there's just, it's a night and day difference, and, you know, the, the white walls, the environment, the coldness, I couldn't believe on one side of the hallway how cold it was in a classroom, and yet directly across how warm it was. And that's the age of our infrastructure. And so the, South High School was something with the number of students we have and the need anyway to increase the capacity at the high school level with projection numbers we saw, we saw it as, as critical. And then, I'll go ahead and let Jack, if you have any words on South.
Well, first, I concur with Liz's assessment from the, from the tour, but just speaking for myself, I've had the opportunity to volunteer at both North and South, and there are, when you, when you go in at class change and you see the hubbub and the, you know, rushing around, and you navigate the parking lots and the access to the various spaces in the building, before I went on the tour, I had the impression that it was not optimal, I guess is the, is the best way to say it. So it just re, the, the tour reinforced from an infrastructure standpoint, but the, you know, the configuration of the building left me less, less than impressed, personally speaking. That's South.
Okay. So what about the middle school, the idea for adding a middle school? Because I know, being there, with the committee first thought about adding an elementary school, and then kind of switched, so tell us a little bit about that.
I've been at all the middle schools-
Mm-hmm.
...and have been fortunate enough to go at lunchtime. And this is an issue with South as well, anytime between classes, I mean, your hallways are so crowded. At a middle school level, I actually had parents communicate to me that they go in to volunteer, whether that's in a classroom or with extracurriculars, and there just isn't the space. They're helping a student in a hallway with crowded spaces anyway. And looking at the, the numbers that were presented to us, it's over capacity, it makes sense of why three of the middle schools feel very crowded. And we saw that as a priority. If we don't address that until down the line, I mean, that's a safety concern and issue that we had as a group and wanted to address. And also, serving the South end of the district as well, you know, I know transportation is an issue with having a middle schooler. I have a middle schooler myself, you still have to transport middle schoolers. Well, if someone isn't at home, those kids can't walk home. I live south of 270 myself, my child can't walk home at, after an after-school event. And so, you know, these were all concerns that we, we had as a group. I mean, it was, it was unanimous, I mean, there wasn't, there was much discussion around these things, but yet our decisions were very clear. It was actually a pretty easy process to come up with things that were very important once, especially once touring the buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I concur with Liz's assessment. I also would add, in the case of the new middle school, there was some discussion fairly early about transitioning Hawthorne into a, into a middle school. And, you know, when all the requests for data were met and so forth, it, it just seemed that that wasn't, you know, as workable as starting on a fresh, fresh plot of land, which fortunately, the district's, district does not appear to have a land, at least it has potential sites in the right, in the right spot, which is rare, I think, in some, many areas. The other area, I've had the opportunity to spend a lot of time at Walnut Springs, and again, at either lunch or class break, the first thing I notice is the, is the sound level. You know, with that many kids in that small a space, it, you know, it can, it can get intense. And sometimes noise is a good thing, but it's continual.
So then that takes us to the third point, which the safety concerns. And you had said briefly about parking lots, but can you expand a little bit when you're talking about safety concerns around the district?
Well, the district has done a fabulous job, and we know that there are things in the budget. However, some of the members of the committee brought up, I guess there's, some of the parking lots are dark at South, or need, a need for more lighting there. You know, air quality is a concern, especially in a building like South with the issues with the HVAC and, and some of the windows and such. So those were issues that we just wanted to put in there, because we want you to know that we still hope these are a priority-
Sure.
...of the district, and especially in the world we live in as well, to continue to address the safety needs in the community in which we live. I mean, the addition of the buzzer systems in all the schools was awesome, how fast that went. I'm sure every parent probably feels a little better, the fact that our buildings have those. And so those are examples of things you have done, but we want those issues still addressed in the, in the future, and make sure that there is monies available for those needs.
Mm-hmm.
I would just reiterate that that recommendation was not meant to, to highlight defects in the safety, it's an encouragement to continue the, the path that we're on and not short funding for that to do something else.
Okay. Thank you. And that's, I really just wanted the room and my fellow board members to hear some of that stuff, because I think when you just hear the bullet points, you, you're missing a pretty large, important piece of that. So thank you very much, and thank you to all the committee members. I'm, I'm going to keep talking, though. I mean, you guys can sit down, but, so I, a couple of things, I'm just going to tell you my thoughts and feelings. And I jotted down notes, so they're a little bit out of order. I have zero interest in cutting any programs that are in this district, meaning the able and talented and, and the magnet program. So I've heard a little bit of buzz going around the district, that is not all what we are talking about, we are simply talking about facilities. I loved the slide on there when it talked about maybe expanding opportunities, it would be nice to get back to where we were many years ago. So just my thoughts and, and feelings. We talked a little bit about finances. Dave came, Dave, I forget his last name, Dr. Conley.
Conley.
Yes, came and presented to the committee, and I thought it was very beneficial. I think it would be nice if he came to one of our board meetings and presented, so the community could see a little bit about what was talked about. I thought that was, that was really good. Critical issues, sorry. Still, I liked, you know, we keep talking about the enrollment, and Richard, you made some awesome points about how quickly that is going to change. I guess I hadn't done the math in my head, in three years, I mean, middle school, over. So for me, I'm interested in moving forward in the community process, absolutely. The focus on Emerson and Hanby and really talking about community members is critical. Dave Conley to come and talk about financial comments. My only little piece would be, I would like to see, maybe Jeff be able to start some design processes for our critical items, to bring back to the community, just to continue this conversation. I think we're going to have to give them something to talk about. I feel like we need to do something about a middle school in the southern end, as well as fixing some of the inefficiencies in South. Thank you.
I, I really, it's, it's just very interesting to me how honored I feel, and I bet the rest of the board that we get to have this kind of conversation, and we have the healthiness of our district, that we are, are able to have this kind of conversation and talk about numbers of students and dollars and facilities, facilities that are loved and revered, and facilities that need deep help, and facilities that we just are, are excited to help create the best learning environment that we can. We always start with safe, warm, dry. But then we would like to go to inspirational, innovative, creative, inspiring to repeat. And so I, I will not dive deep into all of my notes, we, the, the board here done a great job. I have, along the specific, and I'm going to challenge my board members here to chime in, on one of the last slides, Dr. Kellogg had, specific board commitments. Are there any of those, and, and I don't know if we can go back one or two, thank you, Jeff. Are there any of my fellow board members that would say they would not like to move forward with the community involvement engagement process?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I would like to move forward the community engagement process, but I was going to recommend that maybe we start with the priority one items, and then move forward with the, the committee's important items or priority two items after that, just so we can get the process really going on the priority one items, so.
That's, and I know you're not, that's not an official kind of resolution, but discussion on that.
It isn't that I have any concerns about the priority one items, I'm just concerned about making decisions, when I make decisions, about having the, the package, so that I can say, all right, when I'm going to do this, I'm doing this because this is going to happen here, so that I have a better sense of how things play out as a whole. But I think probably what might, I don't know if it would help or not, as the surveys designed, as the focus groups, you know, community meetings sorts of things are designed to consider how they're weighted and how the discussion goes and how questions are placed, that can help move things along fairly quickly.
Okay. Any other discussion on this, Jerry's idea?
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I, I agree with Dr. Nestor Baker, I, as long as it doesn't slow us down to getting to a complete package for review, if we can manage those logistics, I'd be, I'd be fine with looking at it in two parts. I just don't want it to slow down the overall timeline. I want us to stay, I want us to stay aggressive.
Stay aggressive, right, yeah, thank you.
So that's, I think what I was trying to say, too. I think that we need to start a little bit of the design to give the community something to look at, because I think we know those are critical items that need to be addressed, so I think they can happen hand in hand, so.
Yeah, I definitely agree that, I think we should start the design process, too. I, I do think that those are two things that can move forward simultaneously, start design and also get more community feedback, because we have gotten quite a bit of community feedback this past year with the strategic plan, that did include facilities as part of that. So I think if we begin with the design process, we'll even be able to get better community feedback.
My concern about that is if we start design, that basically says, we've decided what we're going to do. And I, I worry about that. I really, I worry about that a lot, especially when we're talking about, you know, 14 million for safe, warm, and dry at South, to 34 million for safe, warm, and dry, plus another 20 million for whatever that may be. And if we start in design on that 20 million, and I don't see how we could do the 14 million without also considering what might go there, it basically says, okay, we're targeting your feedback on what we've decided we are going to design. And that worries me. I, I just, I am very leery of going out and saying, we haven't made up our minds, but we're designing this.
Why are we saying options, design options, not a specific design?
Just the beginning phases of design. And I guess my thoughts are, I mean, we, we've already begun community feedback this past year, with strategic planning, there was a facilities portion to that. I think the committee spent a lot of time on this, based on my interaction with some of the members, and discussing with other community members, and my own experience, and looking at the data regarding the middle schools and how enrollment has really gotten beyond capacity. I think that it's important to, I think they've gotten it right. I think the priority one items, for me, are the new middle school and renovations at South, so.
I'm, I'm just really worried about going for design of renovations, because, yeah, we, we did get feedback in the strategic planning process, but when I think about the numbers of people who gave us feedback on that, and the number of comments about facilities versus the number of comments about program and so forth, I don't feel confident that I have received a lot of feedback other than conversations I've had with people and the number, the relatively small number of people who've been engaged with us far. So I'm, I'm just leery about saying we haven't made decisions and then making those decisions without allowing the community to say, we want, we, we are in favor of pursuing significant renovation. We, we think it's a great idea to build a middle school. And I hope they do say that, but I don't know if they will, so we shall see. But I'm, I'm leery about it. But I'm, I'm leery about it. I'm very leery. Because when you go out and people believe that you've already made the decisions, then it skews whatever information people are going to give you.
If I, I might, and the question of something to look at, I'm looking at a couple of things, depending on where you do it. So, to the point of what, what could be something to look at, with South, I think there are multiple versions, to your point. Anything from the $14 million solution to something else. And, and I'm not suggesting where that is yet, I'm just suggesting that there are things that can be prepared for people to look at. The, the new middle school is an easier one. It's gonna be conceptual drawing, but it's not, it wouldn't be, it'll show you, it's gonna go here, and it's gonna have 700 students. It's not gonna, it, it's not gonna be like a showroom car. It's just gonna be, there's a block mass here, this many students, this is where it'd go. It won't answer the question, who goes there?
Right.
There's no boundary to it. On the next set of pieces, the Longfellow renovation expansion, again, conceptual block mass. There'd be a block here on top of this. This is what would be left. This, these are the renovation parts. Same with Whittier. You're not gonna see, you know, color palettes. You're not gonna see classrooms. You're gonna see, we're gonna stick, we could stick a wing on here. And even then, this community's responding to what they're seeing. It's not gonna be a level detail in order, we couldn't have the level detail down to that kind of showroom look to start a community engagement process in January. But we could have a, hey, we drop a block of classrooms here, or here, or here, and that's what we're talking about. The new elementary, again, is pretty easy. The Hawthorne renovation, there's really nothing to see, other than it's gonna be these, I think what we can get out of that for a Hawthorne, or a Whittier, and even a South, is what are the components that are gonna be addressed, right, Jeff? So, we would be able to break down. You had that large slide of, we looked at these components, roof, HVAC, et cetera, electrical. If we said, the Hawthorne renovation project that would, would hit, has costs, estimated costs associated with HVAC for this month, roofing for this month, we can do that, right? But I'm not, we're not, you know what I'm saying? Maybe not, I'm not being clear.
We, we will have that breakdown. I'm looking at preliminary version of that now, a breakdown of those building components, just identifying the condition assessment piece, the 14 million piece, if that's what you're.
Right, so.
So, we, we will have that.
Alright, so it's kinda like this. You take your car in for a checkup. The guy goes through it, and he hands you a list of things that can be done to each component, how much it would cost to have that done. Some of that we can do for some of these buildings, but showroom-ready, like this is where the classrooms are being, they're gonna look like this, we're not, we're not anywhere near close. The, the hardest one in this is the South one, because it's anywhere from, as Jeff said, he has kind of a kit of parts that he's put together with a maximum end and a minimum end, and what's in between. And so, what's in between is how much of that in between do you wanna share for, for community consumption? To say, are you asking him to say, I like this version of the South project? Or I like this version of the South project? Or are you just saying, these are various ways we could address the South project. We want you to know about them. What are your feelings? Those are two different questions. And are you asking to give the impression for the community to weigh in, of those versions of this project, we prefer this one? Or are you simply trying to create conversation, understanding that we are looking at various versions, and what's the feedback to those various versions? I, I think they're two different kinds of questions, I think.
I think, to bring that up a level, I, I mean, I think Dr. Nestor Baker is where, where I'm at, which is the community has to say that they're good with us progressing, period, right? Relative to the critical priorities. And now, I have a lot of faith on this one, that, that the, the community's gonna be very positive and very eager to pursue. So, you know, the second part of that is, is that what I don't want is the efforts to gain the consensus support of the, the community to slow us down on moving on the criticals. And maybe that's a little bit preemptive to say, I feel pretty strongly the community's gonna be behind us doing these things on the critical list. The importance may be a little bit more negotiable. But, you know, based upon the timelines that, Jeff, you've talked about, I mean, frankly, every, every month lost is, is an impact to getting the project done, you know, sooner, right? And it's just that simple. And in, in the two particular cases, what's critical, they're called critical because it's critical, right? So, I'm still back to the same place that I was. I, I'm good with us talking about conceptual components relative to the criticals as a way to kinda throw some, some gasoline on the fire and get things moving. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that we need this, we need the support of the whole community relative to all the priorities that we've got on the table.
Right.
I, I think, Dr. Kellogg and Jeff, I would lean more toward, and really, you can say, who cares where I lean? I'm just one vote. I, I think, I think we need to take to the community some concepts of, and I'm, I'm just looking at critical right now. I, I think back to Jerry's idea, that I, I, I wanna be sensitive, Dr. Nestor Baker, to perception. But I also don't wanna be just held back by it. That I think if we are really asking the community, tell us what you think about South renovation, anything from safe, warm, and dry to innovative, inspirational, et cetera. They have to know some kind of components. What does that mean? Not, not where are all the rooms going to go, et cetera, but if you want this innovative, creative school, we could provide this kind of space, and the costs associated with that would be like this. Whereas the school community may push back and say, we think all of that is good, but, but we think that's too much, or vice versa. I'm, I'm more toward, I, I think there needs to be some conception, and I think, Dr. Kellogg, you're right. The middle school piece is much easier, 'cause it's a new build, potentially on land, and that's just an easier. And, and I think we all agree the, the safety stuff, which I really, I think we all concur, the school is done really well with. And, and Liz, I think you even brought that out with the buzzer, right? So, I, and I get, I, I know, we're, we're trying to figure this out. But if I was a community member, well, I am. If I was a community member that's not on the board and hadn't seen all of this, and you brought to me three or four concepts, I, I think, I, just me, I don't think I would say to you, you've decided this already. I think I would, let me, just the last, just, no, no, just the last little blurb. I think I would feel more informed of, okay, so 15 million does this, 25, 22 does this kind of thing? And 20, I, I think I would feel more, I think I would feel more informed.
I actually think that's a doable thing. To me, that's not the same as designing pieces and parts and so forth. I think, you know, the concepts, you can't, I can't respond to somebody who says, are you in favor of spending 34 million bucks? If I don't have a sense of what 34 million bucks buys. So, I think the way, John, that you were talking about it, make, it makes sense to me. You know, because you can't just go out and say, hey, what do you wanna do to South? And expect to get decent feedback. But to say, here, here are the recommendations, and here is what, you know, 14 million dollars does, and here's what roughly 34 million dollars does, and it, so that people can have a sense of what they are responding to. That gives us a sense, and, you know, in the timeline that we talk about for the community involvement process, 'cause it is very compressed in that Phase One of community involvement, to get that kind of information, that then sets us up really well to move into developing more, without having made the decision without the input of the community, beyond the concepts.
Let me, let me say this real quickly. I, really, seriously, hold on to that. So, Bullet One, move forward with the community involvement process. I, I think we are also saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that in this, the Level One, we are looking for some conceptual images, something for people to see, ideas of what could be done at the different levels. Now, the team, sorry, the committee came with three different, four different levels, as I recall, right?
Three.
Three.
Oh, that's right. Number four was, yeah, okay. We're not, we're not talking about that right now. Okay, yes. Correct? Does that get back to your concern?
Um, yes, that's actually what I was hoping for was design concepts. Because I thought we'd be able to get better feedback that way, so, thank you.
Are you mostly there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's always the devil's in the details.
Absolutely, it absolutely is.
And we have to be careful what the devil looks like.
It absolutely, Jeff, she's calling you a devil. Just want you to know that.
He, he's used to that.
He's been, been called worse.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we are clear on Bullet One?
Oh, well, to everybody, me. So, my question, I heard, lead with Phase One. I think we can develop what you're talking about for, I'm gonna pull out Emerson and Hamby's as a separate conversation for a moment. I think we can develop what you're talking about for, for everything that was recommended. So, are we saying just put South and the new middle, new middle school out there in Phase One in response to that, and not do anything with the rest of it for now? I see one head, yes. I see.
You're nodding yes on community engagement or design stuff?
Just design stuff for the critical components, and then, yes.
So, do you, do you want any community engagement regarding the Tier Two or Tier Three components at all? Or do you just want it to be South? And, okay, so you want one communication plan, but the specific, the more, what, what can we see for South and the new middle school, the other components, we don't need what it would look like, kind of concept? Just the, the, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but they're still in there, and I, I wanted to make sure you heard that. Yes.
Yes, yes.
The, the thing I think we wanna be cautionary of with South, and I have to have some people help me understand how to do it, I think, is I don't think what I hear, what I think you're saying is, you don't want this to appear to be a referendum on which South project you want done. You wanna gather community input on the various components. And those are, is a real gray area in about what people are doing. So, the design of the community engagement has to be careful to, unless you're looking for, no, we're kinda looking for, where would the community put most support? But I, I don't hear you saying, which one of these would you most likely support? I hear you saying, gather feedback on each of the concepts.
Yeah, I think that the community needs to see, I think Nancy said this. The community needs to see the magnitude of what 34 million dollars looks like, right? Because, because concepts in the community may think that 34 million dollars is, you know, building the Polaris Mall, right? I mean, it, you know, or, or 34 million dollars just isn't enough, right? So, I think that they need to be able to see what that, that order of magnitude is, but not, like you said, not the detail, not down to the color palette.
Now, I understand better. Thank you.
Good. No, no, 'cause I want you and, and Jeff and, and the committee to leave here really feeling good about, okay, this is what they're asking us to do, next steps, great. Bullet Two, engage building staff at schools slated for potential renovations. Anybody not wanna do that? Yeah, who's gonna vote against that?
Well, I do wanna do it, but I got something to say about it.
Okay, go ahead.
The kinda wiggle for me on it is engage building staff at schools slated for potential renovation. And the next one is targeted community engagement focused on Hamby and Emerson. So, we say we want building staff at schools slated for potential renovations. Okay, but that says that we have definitely decided that we're not interested in renovating Hamby and Emerson. There we go. If we do not include Hamby and Emerson in discussions, our decision and the community engagement approach is defined on getting rid of those buildings.
What I just said to Nancy off microphone was, that's exactly what I wrote down. My suggestion, how did you phrase it? My, my hope. My suggestion was, I, I have not made any decisions here. And anybody that says I has is a liar, liar pants on fire. But, the, if we're going to engage those buildings slated, if we're gonna engage the staff for those buildings slated for renovation, by saying to them, what is needed in your facility, what is holding you back? Then I think we need to do the same thing to the staff's, staff, not the staffs, the staff at Hamby and Emerson, and gather them together and say, what don't you have you wish you had? What is holding you back from, et cetera? And I know we've done some discussion, but I, I, I would really like to merge Bullet Two and Three, engage building staff, and I wrote, and I wrote it down a couple of times, and I, and listen, that's, that's, that's not an oversight on anybody. I just thought to myself, well, let's just go to them and say, you tell us what is limiting, and a part of the phrase was, how does the building enhance or limit your teaching and learning? I think I snatched that phrase off of one of the slides. So, that, I wrote that down a couple of times. I thought, I'd like to see that.
I would, too. And I think when we have those discussions, it's about what's holding you back, but it's also about what do you, what do you love? What do you wanna hold on to, and what's holding you back? Because all of this is way, way to the balance. You know, and even as we talk about Central College, we, poor Central College has been kinda left out of all of this discussion. We need to talk to the people who are currently using Central College. So, do you understand what the point is? By drawing it in on only those slated for potential renovation, we have made de facto decisions.
Agreed. And so, I'll be the devil's advocate and tell you that I think the cost, aside from the educational efficiencies, the cost of the district long-term for maintaining those facilities is a price tag that needs to be given strong consideration. Our ability to do some cool things to maybe make it feel a little bit better and make the staff feel a little bit better about where it is, and the kids and the parents, doesn't take care of the long-term problem of very, very old buildings that are difficult to find parts for, to retrofit for. The, there are major long-term capital improvements that this board will spend money. If you keep those buildings online, I'm just being the devil's advocate. I'm not telling you what way to go. I'm, I'm your realtor, giving you the information. The long-term investments to keep those buildings online in this district are, are, from a rational, not rational, from a data perspective, not, I'm gonna back up, I won't say irrational.
Yeah, I think you better back up.
This one may get me flayed, that's okay. There's a huge expenditure of capital on those two buildings to maintain them further on. You can, you can make that decision, but I think you have to recognize that that's, that, the other side of the coin is, if you, if you don't take the recommendations of the committee, you're committing to a long-term capital investment in those buildings that at some point brings the question, why do we continue to spend money on them?
I think, though, we're looking at it as gathering data, and we just wanna hear what the staff has to say. So, it will help us make a better decision. Because even though they're expensive, it's not just our decision, it's the community's decision. So, I think we, we need to talk to them.
Well, and we can't, I, I would be against Bullet Three, targeting the community engagement focused on Hamby and Emerson, until we have the staff's input, so we could go to the community and say, the staff is telling us this about these facilities.
Well, then we have a timeline disconnect here, because.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I'm good with that.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with us inverting the timeline. I mean, it's, you know, the, I, I do think Bullet Point Three is, is innocently presumptuous, right? I, I don't know that I would describe it as saying, we've made a decision. I think it's presumptuous, and, and it should be incorporated, frankly, not in Two, because it says community engagement. It should be incorporated in Number One. It should be incorporated in Number 1, right? Now, if we feel that we need to have staff input prior to community involvement, then we need to invert that timeline. Like I said, I don't have a problem with that. And the only thing that I'm going to state is, is what I had an opportunity to say when I did attend a community or a committee meeting, which is, it, we need to make sure that it is crystal clear that what we are not talking about is renovation. That is an overused word. It is easy for us to renovate plumbing. It is easy for us to renovate roofing. It is easy for us, you just simply take what's there, replace it with what's new. The question that has to be put before staff and community is, the physical facility, facility able to be reconfigured? If it is not reconfigurable, I'll go with what Dr. Kellogg is saying, no amount of money will get that school building where it needs to be, because you can't reconfigure it to be usable for the purposes that we need it for. Hamby's a great example. The, the way that the pillars are in that building to create larger classrooms, it is physically impossible, right? Without us tearing down the building and basically rebuilding new. So, it has reconfiguration limitations, and we need to make sure that that's clearly understood. Because if people go, well, I just want you to renovate it, then we're just simply slapping a new coat of paint on a capital expenditure problem that's going to persist, right? If they say, I'd like the building to remain the facade that it is, but everything else torn down like Hollywood, and everything put, you know, 21st century behind that facade, that's a different conversation, right? And we really need to make sure that there's some clarity in, in the guideposts around how we, we ask for input on these things. I mean, I'll go back to what you said, Nancy, you can't just say, what would you like done at South? Because that's just an, that's an entire Pandora's Box of opportunities, right? Good and bad.
I should probably, maybe the way I framed this didn't communicate what I was suggesting. The community engagement focus on Hamby and Emerson, there is the opportunity, so, we can take the opportunity to fold in, talking to the staff at Hamby and Emerson, and ask the same question. Bullet Number 3 was over the sensitive issue about community expectations, that if the board makes a decision to no longer use those buildings as they are today, what are the acceptable parameters the community would be okay with if those buildings came offline? So, so that wasn't intended to say, that was intended to say, do we want to find out what acceptable uses if we take them offline? The conversation with staff about the inadequacies is, is one part, and I'll say this, and I hope it does, I already said, probably said some things and I come off the wrong way, and I'm probably being Twittered to death. That's okay. The, the input from staff about the teaching and learning expertise, I value that feedback. They don't have the extra expertise to talk about the plumbing, the roofing, the pieces that, that, that we know, and whether or not continuing to pump millions of dollars into those things to keep them going makes sense. So, I think Richard's described it very well in terms of difference between reconfiguration. So, we can have the conversation with the staff. We know what the dollars and cents are for capital improvement. The intent of that question was, do you, are you at all interested in having a conversation about what might be potential uses that the community would favor if they're not used by the school districts of the school? If not, we take it off and we just don't have the answer. Because if you come back with, we're taking them offline, the timing of taking them offline, and what do you want, that, that is the defining question. If a Board of Education in Westville decides to take a building offline, particularly those and where they are and their significance, what is acceptable to the community?
I think we have to talk about it.
A lot.
Well, that was, that was the intent of the question. Do you want to start those conversations, or are we not ready to have those conversations? The piece of asking, you know, folding up the piece of Hamby and Emerson staff talking about the educational environment, what's limiting there, what they'd like to see, we have. The limitations of the building and reconfiguration versus renovation, we have. It's the sticky question of, if you're faced with taking them offline, what's the acceptable parameters? That's the intent of that question.
When you say, talk about it, Tracy, do you mean us, or as Bullet 3 says, community engagement about it?
Well, I think it's got to be the community engagement. I mean, I, I want to know what the community thinks. I'm...
But have we, have we confirmed that we're going to change the timeline? Because that's, to get this, you know, kind of focus back on, on our commitments, are we going to, which I'm perfectly fine with. I think it, I think it's very respectful for us to approach the staff associated with the buildings and the critical and the importance, and get their feedback and use that as additive information for community meetings. I, I don't have a problem with that approach. I just want to make sure that, you know, that we figure out which one we're going to do.
But I think we've already decided Bullet 1, right? Moving forward with the community involvement process. Is that right?
We also talked about getting staff input and then that being...
Not for Level 1. We didn't talk about that.
Yeah, we did. We brought, yeah, we brought that to the...
No, I don't think so.
To the dance.
Go ahead.
I think, Richard, the point that you raised that made my eyebrows go up, you said that the community engagement focus on Hamby and Emerson doesn't fold into 2, it folds into 1.
Right.
And I think that has merit. So, basically, we're looking at kind of a mixture in some ways. So, community involvement process would also include focus, you know, a specific focus on Hamby and Emerson. Number 2, engaging building staff at schools, those are different questions in some ways. So, there's no reason not to include the staffs as well in those questions. So, it's basically taking Bullet Number 3 and dividing it in two different ways.
I, I think I understand. You want, you want to put the Hamby Emerson question about community perceptions on other uses into 1, and you want to go back to the staff at Emerson and Hamby and ask them about the same question we're asking at the other renovations?
In both.
You've got to be careful about how you're asking the community about other uses for those buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Because that in and of itself is a decision.
Good?
I, I think I understand.
Clear, I should say.
Well, we won't, we won't go further without test driving it with you all, that's for sure. So, we'll...
Which may lead us to change the timeline.
Which, which, exactly. So, you know, we have the organizational meeting, so, we'll try and get a package together for, and have opportunities, sit down, make sure that you all are, it's more important that you all are okay with it. It doesn't matter if I'm okay with it. This is about you all being okay with what we're suggesting. It's not about me.
Yeah, I want to make sure you leave this room, though, and Jeff leaves this room, listening, understanding, this is what we're asking of you.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're capturing the general idea. We'll, we can, and Greg Veeberen will be involved, and the rest of the team will start to build that, but we're not going to push this out for feedback until you all get a chance to vet it, make sure we're right, asking it the right way, the way you want it. But I think I understand the changes you just made there.
And clarifying financial commitments. What comments do you have on that one?
I was hoping that maybe, was his name Dave? Okay, Dave Conley. If we could have Dave Conley come to a board meeting in January and make a presentation on some of the options, I think that would be really helpful.
Yep, I agree.
Good.
Yep. That's what I thought you'd want, okay?
And board review, I'm assuming you will be, that's talking about bringing the information to us at the end of this first phase.
We were working on the second half of the year board presentation calendar and leadership this morning, and looking at when we felt that, which board meeting we were slating for bringing forward to you the feedback from the first phase. And so, I think we had that in the first meeting in March. I'll look at that and review that with the board to say, this is where we're targeting. We want to give enough time, but we don't want to linger, you know? So, it's going to be compressed timeline, but we'll get there.
Is there any way we can see some of the comments coming back? Meaning, so, as far as community involvement and staff, is there, who, will someone be logging that? Is that something we can read?
Yes, there'd be no sense in having the conversation, so we'll catalog and document the results. The online component actually has, it's not a poll. The system we're using is a, is an opportunity for any community member who chooses to engage to read what other people are writing and weigh in on what other people are writing and, and provide some feedback and weighting on those things. I actually like that tool, because it means the communities through social, through, through the internet, having conversations with each other about it that we, that we catalog and collect, as opposed to a poll, which is us to them and back to us, or even small group meetings, where you have six, seven, 10 people, you know, limited hearings, who else is hearing? So, we're going to, we'll catalog that information and bring it forward, so, this will be our winter break project, is what we're...
Yes.
One thing I was hoping to add is, for the community involvement piece, I'm glad that we're talking to staff about the buildings, the different priorities. I think that's really important, and the community, but I'd also like to suggest that maybe we want to survey students as well, get their input. So, they're the ones that are in the classes trying to learn, so, I think that would be really important.
That, that component can be done as well, yeah. In fact, I think they'll probably use the online tool more than maybe some of the adults, so, I think we can do that.
Thank you to the committee, just a tremendous amount of work and time. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to this opening discussion. Jeff, thank you very much for the work, Mr. LaRose, that you have done as well, and now have been asked to continue to do next phase. Dr. Kellogg, thank you for diving deeply into this, and I, this matters to the community, and I, all of us, no matter our nuances up here, all of us know that this matters to the community, and what I would say to the community is that it matters a lot to us too. And we will look at this hard and deep with the best brains that we can come up with and make the best decisions we know how. That's why we're here. Moving on. Now, next, at our next meeting, we're going to go into the second phase of the fleet, right? Are we going to talk about that in the next meeting? Okay, moving on. Agent Item 6.01, public comments related to action items. We have two people signed up this evening. We had all those students, they initially signed up, but they have left, left the room.
I advise them that...
The first person to sign up, Nancy McFarland. Please come forward.
Good evening, President Velardo, Dr. Kellogg. I came to speak tonight just for a few minutes about, I was on the committee, the Facilities Committee, and some of, some parent phone calls that I got about the magnet program and the magnet schools. I will preface this by saying that my oldest son went through Emerson, and my youngest son spent a year there. So, I will say that Emerson is near and dear to my heart. It was not something that we took lightly in these discussions as a group. We spoke about the historical significance to Westerville. We spoke about, again, what it was, there were several of us that had students, that had children that had attended the school, so, of course, that also pulls on your heartstrings. But we also, and of course, I was a big advocate of keeping these, these schools alive and well in our district, as the programs as well. So, first, I wanted to clear up that we by no means ever suggested to get rid of the programs. The programs hopefully will stay and grow as we grow as a district, and expand the programs to what they used to be, and allow more and more children to be able to participate in the math and science programs, socialized programs, and the programs that we have already in the district. After touring, I bet, I met Mr. LaRose, Jeff LaRose, at Hamby. I had never been in Hamby Building as long as I've been in this district, and the principal took me around, took us around, and it was very glaring, from the principal's point, from the student's point, and from the teacher's point, that the program did not match the building. And even as much as I love these buildings and love my, my uptown Westerville, it was very clear to see that this, that them housing three different magnet programs in one school with a kiln in the basement, and this is an art school, with a performing arts school that doesn't have a stage, it was very insightful to see that the program did not match the building. And the principal was in the, was very much showing, proving that to me while I was there. So, no matter how much renovation that they, we could slap a stage in there, or maybe we could slap a couple extra classrooms in the basement next to the kiln, it didn't work financially, and it didn't work for the kids that were attending that building, and we are shortchanging the kids in that program at that building. And of course, Emerson is also near and dear to my heart, and, but after spending some time with Jeff LaRose and also having a student, my son, now, my younger son is in a state-of-the-art building for students with learning disabilities, it is nice to see, when Dr. Kellogg talks about the students that need to be inspired the most, sometimes also need an inspiring environment and not an eight-by-eight room or 12-by-12 room that they are spending time in. So, how can we make these facilities be better for just, not the students that are the atypical student, but that not the atypical student? So, expanding those when we look at facilities, I would very much appreciate if you would keep in mind those students as well, and how can we service not just the typical, but the atypical student as well? And how can we build inspiring areas for those students as well in the schools? And when we talk about rehabbing a school, is that school able to be rehabbed for students, for all students to have inspiration? And so, I, as we made our committee recommendations to you, that's what they were, the recommendations, and as we spoke, we entrust you to go out to the community to see what, to see what they have to say. But as you go out to the community, and just as you guys were talking about, should you have designs or you shouldn't have designs, I will tell you, it was helpful to me to talk to Jeff LaRose and to say, like, well, Nancy, I know you love Emerson, I know you love Hamby, I know you love these schools, but what about this? Wouldn't this be amazing if kids could go to a school that looked like this? Or wouldn't it be amazing if kids could have this as their classroom, as their own learning environment? And maybe we can work out something with the community on how we can salvage Emerson and Hamby to still be a part of our community. But as you look at that, also remember, as we gave you that recommendation, that was $7 million that went back into the financials, as if we sold those buildings, that would give us $7 million to move forward, that we wouldn't have to ask for voters' tax dollars down the road. So, I'm playing devil's advocate. I love the buildings, and maybe we can make some sort of way with the community on how we can use those buildings, but I think it is also helps to have a visual for people to see when they go to these meetings as what the possibility is. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McFarland. Our second speaker, Ton Tham Phan.
President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and community members. Everybody use the bathroom at least once a day, and every day, every student walk past a past bathroom at South. And they all can tell you what it smells like. It's not your problem that we have a great smell. We all, we have all kind of great technology, and I'm not sure when the last time that we renovated South, I'm sure we could put some crazy technology in so that the toilet can flush itself. And I'm sure that we could put a stall inside the bathroom so that they all, they could all have a door. I'm sure that we could fix the water fountain so that they all drinkable. And I'm sure that we could do some way, do it some way so that paper towel isn't running out as often as it is. Because when I look, that I could see that we print out 10 of thousands of paper like this. And distribute them to every student attend Westerville School. I'm not going to talk about the foods, because we all know that fries are hard as rock, and that burger's not no flavor. And other two years ago, I was told by, I was told that South teachers were the only people who complained about our math textbook. Today, I again hear from South teachers about the government textbook. Why? Because I was the, what, the, I only go to one school, and it's the South. They told me they've been asking for textbook for years because they don't have... They told me they've been asking for textbooks for years because they don't have enough textbook for students. But yet, next year, everything are going to be taken away from them. Whatever problem that we are having, or whatever kind of politics teachers, administrator are playing, the students are at cost. What inspired me to become the future United States Senator was not only because our government is corrupted with large corporations, but also because that they are just talking until when the people forget and move on. Mr. President, and members of the board, you have done a tremendous job. But we need you to continue to fight for the students. I am asking you to please stop the politics, but when teachers, administrations, and tell them to get over it, because we, the students, are at cost of the politics. South near drinking water fountain, doors for the bathroom stalls, automatic toilet flusher, and government textbook. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pham. Appreciate our speakers this evening. Moving on to agenda item 7.01, public meeting. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of reemploying Gary Ancles during his SERS service retirement. Speakers will have five minutes. Does anyone have any comments regarding this matter? Do we, do we take a vote on this? I'm sorry, I'm not aware. I don't believe so. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 8.01, financials. We have none this evening. Moving on to item nine, agenda item nine, personnel consent agenda. And I'm going to ask 9.01 through 9.08, unless there is a reason to take any out, we will look at these as a whole. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, yes.
Good evening, President Velardo, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains eight sections involving 48 persons. Section 9.01 is the resignation of eight classified employees and six substitutes. 9.02 is the resignation of two teachers. 9.03 is a leave of absence for one classified employee. 9.04 is a temporary change of assignment for two classified employees and one amended item. 9.05 is a contractual status change for five classified employees. 9.06 is one-time payment for five teachers. 9.07 is the employment of seven classified employees and one substitute. And 9.08 is the employment of one teacher, two athletic events assistants, seven supplemental contracts, one outside supplemental contract, and two amended items. And I do want to add that this, the supplemental contracts list includes our newly selected football coach for Central High School for the 2018-19 school year, Mr. Brent Morrison. Spent a longtime assistant coach with the program, and I believe he's here this evening. I'd like to congratulate him.
Thank you for being here tonight, Coach. Should we give him a raise for staying through this whole meeting? Is it, I tell ya, that's like hitting the sled, isn't it?
This is what it's like during the regular season, isn't it, Brent? It's like every, right?
Welcome aboard, glad you're there. I know there are big shoes to fill, but we have all the confidence in what you will do there. Thank you. If you wanted to say a word, you are welcome to do that. You do not need to have to.
That's okay. Just thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. Any questions, comments? If not, please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
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 Yes, moving on, agenda item 10.01. Thank you, Laurie. Final reading, the addition of statistics, trigonometry, and functions course of study, and the removal of pre-college mathematics course of study. I'll remind the con, the audience, the, I'll remind you all that this is the final reading. We have gone through this. If there are any comments or questions from the board?
I would like to move it.
You would like to move it? Where would you like to move it to? A motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
And now, any questions, comments? Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the board likes to trip me up on this congregation thing every once in a while. Moving on to agenda item 10.02, final reading, addition of AP Physics 1 to science curriculum. I am very excited about this AP Physics 1. I'm thinking about signing up and taking it.
Good plan.
We have an online version.
We go a little crazy with these late meetings. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concern? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes, moving on to agenda item 11.01, recommended action, new business, revising policy 7300, disposition of real property, personal property. This is new action, so there is no motion or second. Would you please share with us?
Good evening, President Velardo, Vice President, Dr. Nestor Baker, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, and Mrs. Hendricks. Tonight, you have a revision to policy 7300, disposition of real property, personal property in front of you. Specifically, changes are being recommended to the sections voluntary disposition of personal and real property over $10,000, and mandatory offer of unused school facilities. The revision to the policy is tied to House Bill 438, which became effective April 6, 2017, amending four sections of the Ohio Revised Code to modify the timelines for the sale or lease of school district real property. Additionally, the most recent budget bill revised two more sections of the Revised Code to include STEM schools among the entities required to be given a first offer when selling school district property. The substantive changes to the policy in, are in the timelines for the process for selling or leasing our school facilities. Prior to House Bill 438, we would have had to offer the school district property to high-performing community schools first. Then after 60 days, if no high-performing community school desired the property, then it would be offered to any startup community school or college prep boarding school within our district lines. Now notice is given to all community schools, as well as college prep boarding schools and STEM schools within the district boundaries at the same time. Priority is still given to high-performing community schools within our territory. The changes do not have any financial impact on the district. It is recommended that the board adopt the changes in policy 7300 as written.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Any questions or comments at this point? This is just the first reading, we will go through it. Yes, ma'am.
Just a very minor comment. There's just a couple small typos in the second paragraph on page two.
Okay.
Just spelling.
Thank you. Any other at this time? Thank you very much, Mr. Dorn. Moving on to agenda item 12.01, recommended action, standing business, 12.01 donations. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much, and we, as always, are tremendously grateful for the huge, can I say that? Huge outpouring of donations that we get throughout the year. And some from individuals, some from PTAs, PTOs, other organizations, we are just tremendously grateful. Hearing no other discussion at this time, may I have, please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
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 Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, moving on to agenda item 12.02, motion, I need a motion to approve a president pro tempore for January 1, 2018, until the election of the next board president on January 8.
Wait, I'm so sorry, I'm just zoned out. Do you want a motion to say we can do this?
We're still talking about the buildings right now.
To say we can do this, or are you asking us to approve a pro temp, or to nominate someone? I'm sorry, I was.
Well, the motion says.
That is the question. So, we can bring the motion on, and then amend the motion to include a name.
Okay.
Would you like to bring the motion on and amend?
Sure.
Yes, so moved.
And a second?
Yes.
Okay, now we vote on that, then we bring a name, correct?
Right.
Well, vote on, bring, what we're doing is voting to bring the issue to the table, and then there'll be another motion for the amendment.
According to Bob's rules. Robert, yes, Robert, I know him well, Bob. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I just.
She's zoned again.
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Now, who would like to bring forth a name to be pro tempore president?
We need to forward a motion to amend.
So, we did that.
No, brought the motion.
Motion to amend.
So moved.
Second.
Actually, well, that's okay, we can do it this way, too.
And now it's.
We could have added the name.
Yeah, now it's open for conversation.
We could have added the name.
Please call the roll. I know, that's what I was saying.
Right.
We need, we need to put a name.
We have to pass motion first.
All right.
No, we don't need to pass, we can put the name in.
Okay, I would like to suggest Rick, because I think he's doing a nice job, and he can continue it for the next, to open the next meeting. Because you are amazing.
Okay, we have twin seconds.
Can you, she, she said something about amazing, can that go into the record, please? Thank you very much.
Yes, you did say.
I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that. So, we have a motion and a second? Anybody want to amend anything? Oh, yeah, I do. Please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Abstain. Moving on to agenda item 12, is it right?
No, because we amended the resolution.
Now we have to close the second and the first.
Now we have to vote on it.
Lord have mercy, I thought the church was complicated. Okay, according to Bob's.
We're now voting on an amended resolution.
Yes.
Yes.
May I have a motion and a second, right? Oh, we have, we need to vote on it now.
We have a vote.
Would you please call the roll?
Yes. On Carter and Bird? Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
This is where I was supposed to abstain, not the other one, right?
All right, vote for yourself. If you don't, who will?
I abstain.
You've got your three.
Stay consistent, baby.
That's right.
12.03, overnight out-of-state field trips. Can I go on one of these? Because, sorry, all right, well, let's, let's, let's pull it back here, people. 12.03, overnight out-of-state field trips, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
These are awesome opportunities for our students. North wrestlers heading to an invitational, swim team from north as well, Bowling Green, and Central High School global classroom program, going to Kito and the Galapagos Islands.
Oh, that's amazing.
Speaking of inspirational, innovative, and creative. Did I get a motion and a second on this yet? Did? Anybody arguing about it? Good, please call the roll.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 12, yes. 12.04, resolution approving purchase of school buses. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
You can have it.
And a second to one of them.
It's one or the other.
Have you been here for this whole meeting?
Yes, I have.
You, you are the man.
I spoke up, though.
Please, oh, that hurts. That hurts. People used to say that in my church all the time, too. Would you please go to the podium and, and tell, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's old habits.
Sell some buses, please.
Good evening, good to see everyone. As you may know, the higher revised code requires school districts to pass a resolution for the purchase of school buses. The current capital improvement plan includes the purchase of replacement of our buses every 14 years. So, it's a 14-year cycle. The buses were bid through Meta, Concorde, along with 38 other districts, and Cardinal Bus Sales was identified as the lowest responsible bidder to meet our specifications. Approval tonight will allow us to receive our buses in the beginning of next school year, which will be July 1st or so, give us time to get the camera systems and everything else up in them. It's around 180-day build day, 180 days to build them. I'm recommending that the board approve the purchase of a total of eight school buses and $684,878. So, there'll be one handicap bus in that group, and seven of them will be just standard 72-passenger with the, the ones with the hoods on them, which are propane.
They're, they're all propane?
Yes, the ones with the hoods are propane, and these are all propane as well.
Okay. It's, the only reason I ask is in the upper portion of the, of the motion, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that, but in the request to resolve, you've got, they're all propane. So, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jerry, did you have something?
I do have one question. Thank you.
Sorry.
I was just wondering if the bidded amount falls within what we had budgeted?
Yes, yes. In fact, they were less than they were last year. And I increased a couple things as far as specs go. So, the prices are coming down on the propane products. Research and development and everything is expensive in the very beginning, and then the product's been out there for a while, so the prices are actually coming down quite a bit.
Okay.
So, it's pretty exciting.
That's great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. We, you know, we've gotten a little, a little silly up here toward the end of this meeting, but I'm reminded of our comments regarding the facilities, safe, warm, and dry, and to have buses that are safe, certainly warm and dry, and that's, that's very important. And the folks that work in transportation do tremendous work for very little credit. So, thank you for being diligent, thank you for staying here, appreciate it very much. May you call the roll, please.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, agenda item 12.05, landscape easement agreement. Who is going to be, yes, Mr. Dorn, thank you.
Tonight you have, are being asked to consider a landscape easement request from Traditions of Westerville, which is effectively the National Church residences at the North Street property adjacent to our Central College Elementary School. Traditions is requesting this easement so that they may make landscaping improvements along North Street that consist of a directional sign, stone columns, decorative landscaping and irrigation surrounding the stone column, and fencing. The improvements for their entrance will also serve as a beautification improvement for our property. The specific area in question is our southern perimeter running along the athletic field and the playground on North Street. The city of Westerville is requiring this agreement prior to issuing Traditions a permit for the project. The language in the easement protects our financial and planning interests as we consider what the future holds for this particular property. The improvements will be funded by Traditions of Westerville, and Traditions will maintain the area. Traditions is also supporting us in our related attorney's fees. If at some point in the future we determine to make substantial changes to the property, we will be able to do so, as Traditions is assuming the risk in this landscaping project. It's being recommended to the board to agree to this landscape easement with Traditions of Westerville.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dorn. Any questions or comments?
Motion and a second.
May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Question, comments? Please call the roll.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes, moving on to Agenda Item 13.01, Public Comments. We have no one signed up this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item 14.01, Brief Board Comments. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say briefly at this time shortly, briefly?
What about wishing everyone a safe and happy holiday? There you go.
Safe, warm, and dry.
Safe, warm, and dry, happy holiday, yes?
An inspiring holiday.
An inspiring holiday. We'd like to thank the students that were here this evening. It's great that they are getting involved for their class. We'd like to thank the Cub Scouts we met with earlier, that's a wonderful thing. We'd like to thank the speakers this evening, and we'd like to thank you for staying with us and helping us to discuss some very important items and more to come. Moving on, Agenda Item 15.01. The board will meet in an organizational session on Monday, January 8, here, 6:00 p.m. and for a, I'm sorry, organizational session. 16.01, A Motion to Adjourn. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.